You told him, I think it was our first council meeting after you were mayor because he called me about Otte making too much noise and it was the week of the carnival. And that would have been May, we would have not have had our council, we would have gone to our council meeting because it's Memorial Day. So I think it was June of your first year that you told him in this meeting with him here, I checked my minutes and it wasn't in the minutes, but I bet it's on the tape, obviously. But I'm like, so he was told in person, face to face, in June of two thousand and eleven?
Yeah, he knows.
Uh huh, he knows. Joe.
Are you ready, Dawn?
For you.
Y'all ready?
Yes.
We'd like to begin our meeting with pledge to the flag and I have one of our boy scouts here this evening, Mr. Mason Conway will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mason. We'll get you back up here in just a little bit. Okay, if everyone's had a chance to read their minutes and operating statements, we'll entertain a motion for approval in a minute.
I'll make a motion that we approve the operating statements, the June twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen council meeting minutes, July fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for May two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, rise.
Aye.
Noses, motions carried. We're a little short tonight with our meeting. We have Donald, Councilman Donald Wilson's not here and Amy's not here. Donald is on a surprise seventieth birthday party trip that his wife took him away for fourteen days on a trip. And I will let him tell you next month when he gets back where he's at. He was probably very surprised. I know, but I'm not gonna tell anybody, but I think that was very nice of her. Okay. Tonight on our agenda, we had a representative from the Sheriff's Department was gonna be here because we had some issues on West Broadway about parking with one of our residents there, Mr. Widdeak, that has been a chronic complainer. He knows he has been. And I told him that we would have Sheriff's Department here to answer his questions tonight so some of these issues could be brought forth. And this is the second time in the last two years that we've had special meetings for his problems and he has not showed up. The first time, we went door to door and gave everyone on Broadway a copy of it, said what night we were gonna have the meeting to discuss parking issues. Everyone but the two people that were the problem were here, Mr. Otte and Mr. Widdeak. Neither one of them showed up that time. Mr. Widdeak, for the last couple of months, has been making numerous phone calls and sending numerous emails to the council people and to Laura, which is one of his neighbors. And I had told him that Ms. Cutsail is the person that's in charge of police and things like that. He fails to realize that there's a protocol and there's a way you do things in town here. Every council person has a job and you go to the council person that's responsible for that. And I talked to Laura and I told her to make sure that, and I told John, to make sure that everything that he sent is being, all his emails are being kept. All of his recordings that he, when he sends a voicemail or anything, we're keeping all of those because it's getting to the point that there's not being complaints, it's being next thing to threats. And I'm almost to the point where keeping them, it needs to be, when these threats start coming, we will charge him for threatening a council person. It's getting out of hand. I'm sorry that he's got problems down there, but it's an issue, the most of the issue is complaint, it's him and a neighbor that don't get along. He's being a real pain to everybody that's on that street. It's about parking and it's, parking is limited down there. We took parking, there's only parking on one side of the street. Mr. Widdeak has four vehicles that he parks on the street and they have two drivers. And he has a backyard that he cleans it up. He could put two vehicles back there. So the issue is a lot of his problems. And he knows that. He knew we were going to discuss this tonight. He knew a month ago we were gonna discuss it. Last week, we get an email from him and says he can't be here because he's taking his wife away for, what, their-
Forty-sixth anniversary.
Their anniversary or something. But, you know, we've gone out of our way to be nice to Mr. Widdeak. We've done everything we're good to help solve this problem. And I told him that this is where the problem's gonna be handled, not calling different council people and sending me emails at eleven and twelve o'clock at night because I don't read emails at twelve o'clock at night. I'm sorry. I don't set up all night long just to read them. I have a life and the rest of the council people have a life. So hopefully, one of these days, he'll bring his complaints to this council room and not be calling Laura or whatever. He knows that Ellen's in charge. And there's, there's proper ways to do that. And so everything is being kept on file that we've been getting from Mr. Widdeak for the past year. And he knows that. And I just thought that, you know, now everybody else knows it. So if you have parking complaints, please take them and call, and call Ellen. She has her phone number there. I don't know whether it was your home phone or whether it was your-
My cellphone, which is on me twenty-four seven.
That was given to him. So he knows the proper protocol. So we're gonna leave it at that. And hopefully, you know, if, we had a representative from Sheriff's Department's gonna be here, it was a supervisor. And the other day, I said, well, wasn't he used to send supervisor because Mr. Widdeak wasn't gonna be here again? So. We'll do what we can to try to solve his problem. I don't think it would ever happen, but we'll try. Okay. This past month, a couple of, well, I guess last, last week, two weeks ago, I guess it was, Edgar and I went to Union Bridge Fire Hall one evening. They had a, State Highway had a meeting there. It was referenced to what they call the Haynes Branch Bridge. That's the bridge that's on the south side of town. Maryland State Highway is gonna replace that bridge. I had some concerns because their letter said that it was due to flooding and some environmental issues with the bridge. So Edgar and I went and it was just what we had figured. They are gonna replace this bridge out here because the bridge is in bad shape. We asked about the bridge here on Main Street and Union Bridge. Of course, that's nowhere on the radar screen to be replaced or anything done to it because they said the bridge itself is structurally sound. I have some doubts about that. So we have some other avenues. They told us to contact some other people and see in reference of what they wanted to do. Every year, when they had the State Highway has their tour meeting, I do bring up about this bridge. They're saying putting in a new bridge isn't gonna help the flooding down there. So we can just keep bringing it up every year. And that State Highway meeting for the tour meeting is coming up sometime in September and then the final meetings in November. So that'd be raised again.
I have a question about that, just for clarification. Are we talking about the bridge right at the Frederick Carol County line or are we talking about the bridge on P.S. Clemsonville?
On P.S. Clemsonville, that's Haynes Branch.
Just wanted to make sure because there was some confusion with other people too and I wanna make sure they knew which we're talking about.
Frederick Carol County line, I'm sure they don't have anything planned for that because that was replaced right after Agnes, when that bridge collapsed. So that bridge is not old. They kinda contradict yourself because they said a bridge, when they get eighty years old, they look at trying to replace them. Well, this bridge down here was built in nineteen thirty-eight. So it's had its, almost its time to be replaced, but we'll keep working at it. So I don't look for any immediate results, but we'll keep trying. Friday a week ago, I did meet with Army Corps Engineers. We went down here to George Street, right past where D and L meets used to be. And if anybody doesn't know, there is a tree that is probably, probably the base of that tree is probably fifteen, eighteen foot in diameter. It's crossways the stream. It has the stream blocked. We've been trying for a couple of years to get that tree out of there. DNR says that we can't get into the stream. So I got contact with Army Corps Engineers. Two gentlemen came out and we're drafting a letter now to send to another agency and maybe we can get some help getting that tree out of there. I told them our big concern is we do have a sewer main that's right underneath that tree that we can't even get to. So we don't know if anything's going wrong there or not. But when you look up the stream, that they noticed, there's also a telephone pole that sits in, when you go up around the bend, there's a telephone pole that sits right in the middle of the stream. So with that, plus our sewer line, they seem to think there may be another fund that we can get some money from. And the one letter, they sent us a draft and they're saying like they can go up to a hundred thousand dollars. And then after that, there could be some issues where there'd be some cost sharing. But the one gentleman says he doesn't see where they're gonna get anywhere near that. But they have to send who knows how many people out to investigate it first before they can plan anything. So. That, again, could be two months. It could be six months before they get here to start their planning stage, but we can't control that either. Last Wednesday, we had our WRCC meeting. That's a group that's been together for a few years now. And we'd sent a draft to all the towns attorneys to look at. And I'm sure we're gonna have some questions on that. All the attorneys are gonna look at that and get back and they're gonna try to get this signed sometime in September, hopefully, if not then, October, while this Board of Commissioners is there because they're the ones that agreed to an eighty-twenty cost sharing on the mitigation that we have to do. Even though they say that we don't have a stormwater tax to pay because the county didn't, they got out of that. This is basically what it amounts to, is the water that runs off that we have to treat. And unfortunately, we're gonna be like other towns. You're gonna, we have to sit down and Dawn and I were just discussing how we're gonna make up that extra money that we're gonna have to pay every year for six years to take care of this problem. And the other towns have already, they're showing it as a capital expense or whatever on their water and sewer bills. So there could be a possibility another twenty, twenty-five dollars be added on that. And we don't have any other choice because we're looking at expense now of about, probably about fourteen thousand dollars a year just for that mitigation for six years. So unless we get a new governor or something and everybody decides we're not gonna have to do this anymore. But it's, actually, it's through MPDES permit, next phase. We have a tape here. If anybody, the council, I think it'd be beneficial for the council to look at this. This is for your permit. Do we get this every year, a renewal? So between the CD and the book, it'd be here in the office for all the council members to look at. And I'm sure John's gonna have some comments on this because it's rather thick and we'll be working on that for the next couple of, I know for the next couple of months to try and get something resolved there. It's not gonna be pretty for any of us, so. That is about it on my report for right now. We'll go with John and see what he has. I know he's got some other things for us.
Yeah, before I get into my agenda items, just to make a quick comment on that stormwater fee sharing arrangement with the county. We did get that end of last week. I've had a chance to just read it quickly. So we'll take, spend a little more time and see how it's gonna apply here in Union Bridge. But one thing that jumped out very quickly was that that agreement treats towns that have allowed the county to enforce the stormwater management laws differently than it would treat Union Bridge. We adopt the text of the, of the county stormwater management laws, but we've always been sort of protective of enforcing it, interpreting it. We haven't done much of that in, in recent years because we haven't seen much development. But in the larger projects, the town has retained at the cost of the developers, engineers that would review the stormwater plans. We're probably gonna have to revisit that because we don't, probably would not want to put the town in a situation where it has to spend additional money because it's not able to, to take advantage of the resources that the county has. Now, it's still a sharing arrangement, so the county is still gonna do the lion's share of, of the administration. But there appear to be some finer aspects of, of that agreement that, that we may need to look at and see whether we can afford to do that essentially because the town doesn't have stormwater management staff. So we have nobody to dedicate. If there was some type of service that we'd have to do to sort of fill in the gaps, we'd have to go out and, and hire outside consultant. So we'll look at that more carefully in the, in the weeks and months to come, but I just, that's my-
The, the county has been checking our outfalls. I mean, we have some that runs off of Main Street down into Pike Creek, Little Pike Creek Park. And different ones, they do, for the last couple of years, they do check those and they, they come up and evaluate them for us. There's only two more, two stormwater management ponds in town and one's owned by the Board of Education for Elmore School. And the other one is at the Dollar General store, which is owned by Trout's. So there, but, but when there's agreement, they're still, they're, they say that the stormwater tax isn't there, but we also get charged for the runoff that runs off the street down into the streams, which we have to do mitigation on that. And which I think we do a pretty good handle on that. We have a pretty good handle on that because we planted a lot of trees in both the, the park down here and then the Bowman property. And you do get some credits for trees being planted. But then I'm, I'm, I have an issue with, I mean, we still pay the cost of keeping it mowed and maintained. So that ought to give us some credits for that also. So there's some of the questions that we have to go with this contract to see how that's gonna go, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Then on to the agenda, a water appropriation permit update. We're sort of at the end of the, of our staff review to respond to the questions that came to us from MDE that we talked about, some of which we talked about at the July fifteenth work session that we had. And so we are about to, to, in order to meet that deadline from MDE about to send a package of information that will include some of, actually will include amended water audits because there have been some changes that, that Dawn was able to pick up with the help of Jeff, Jeff Glass. We will send them the, the description of the town's legal rights as they relate to the Phillips Well on the Jackson Ridge property with the, I guess, the emphasis at this point that it would be the town's preference to not take on the maintenance of that well now. That was one of the questions that the state had, the reason being that the maintenance cost, basically. But also to explain that, that there's been the certificate of potability on the water on that well. There's almost certainly some maintenance to be done to get that well up and running, but it's, it's fairly close in the scheme of things. So we'll explain that as well and, and basically track some of the things that Jeff Glass had reported. As part of that report, we will be giving them a Union Bridge Water Conservation Plan. That's something that actually appears to have been asked for the last time the permit was renewed, a few years back. The issue in Union Bridge has, for a long time, has been loss of water through leakage that you've heard and talked about, you know, over and over again over the years. So this is a plan that sort of pulls together some of the ways to conserve, to detect leaks, to basically control your, the water consumption and to, to limit the, the difference between the water that you pull out of the ground and the water that you can, that you can bill for, so to make sure that, that it's all being used. You should have in your package that plan. And I'll, I wanna go through that a little bit only because we haven't had a chance to, to discuss how the plan itself lays out. This is patterned after an EPA document that MDE referred us to. And some of it is, is sort of common sense background as to, you know, the various areas that a municipality should be looking at in terms of water conservation. It gives a little bit of background about the Union Bridge Municipal Water System, which includes attachments that refer to the water resources element and the Water and Sewer Master Plan, which more or less describes the, sort of the makeup of the Union Bridge Water System. As you get to the second part, section two, it lists several measures to be taken. And it, in each measure, there's, again, sort of a generic description of, of the whys and wherefores of, of that particular category. And then at the end of each measure, there's a status slash goal listed, which is more, you know, specific to Union Bridge. In the first measure, which is entitled Water Metering, under the, the status and the goal, it explains that Union Bridge doesn't, in fact, meter the water that it pumps and by consumption at the point of use. Union Bridge has completed a meter replacement program over the past several years. Irregularities are identified through regular meter readings. The town has an experienced independent contractor to troubleshoot emergencies and long-term problems. Meters are inspected, calibrated, and replaced on an as-needed basis. The meter reading and reporting protocol is being revisited to ensure accuracy in the transfer of information to the town's billing system. And that is something that's ongoing with Dawn and Jeff and I believe Mike Zackman as well. Measure two is water audits. Well, we, we are in the midst of a water audit with MDE, so we're, we're certainly taking advantage of the water audit. It's pointed some things out to us in terms of the water leakage. It's also had us, has the town look at the billing practices and, and especially on the commercial industrial accounts. In measure three, the water loss control, this goes to the discussion that we had with Jeff Glass under status and, and goal that the town would seek funding to acquire and operate the Perma Lager System. That was the leak detection system that would attach to, easily by a magnetic device to the, the town's system and then detect or record sound information that then could be read on a computer system. I mentioned in here that the city of Westminster has the software to read that recording data. So part of this plan would be to see if we could get some sort of sharing arrangement from the city. See under that section, if funding is not identified by the end of the current fiscal year, then the town would include in the future year's budget, some funding to begin acquisition of per, Perma Lager units. I think we probably don't have enough pricing information yet to commit to a specific number. But the idea here is that we are committing with MDE to, to go down that path. We would retain the, our independent contractor to install the devices, retrieve the recording data, and then, of course, repair leaks as he does currently. And we would obtain a more reliable estimate of unmetered use by the Union Bridge Volunteer Fire Company. It's not a, a matter of seeking to restrict the fire company, but it's just a matter of accounting for water. If we're getting charged with loss of water, when in fact, it's really being used by the fire company, we wanna know that. We're not really losing it. They're just using it in an unmetered fashion. Measure four, pressure management. We cite in the Union Bridge status and goals that the old water tank has been replaced fairly recently. And water issue, pressure issues are addressed as the town does sectional replacements of its distribution lines. Water use in the treatment process, our monthly backwash rates are reported on those daily reports that, that you saw. And they're totaled and they appear to be relatively modest, so we, we do address that. Measure six, education. Again, the generic language talks about getting the public involved to conserve water and to recognize ways that the public can help. We have pamphlets and a newsletter system that can be used to do that, along with mailing with water bills. We also mentioned that we have recently heard that some of the, our neighboring jurisdictions do have an issue with theft of water. So we think that educating our public might help to the extent that, you know, they, they would be the eyes and ears of the town for that. Measure number seven, water reuse and recycling. We cite in the Union Bridge section that although the town, you know, does not have a large number of industrial or large volume irrigation users, that it does have a site development plan process that's administered through the Planning Commission. So those types of opportunities would be reviewed when a plan is reviewed. And then water pricing, you all are painfully familiar with, with the water pricing issues here having had to raise rates and also build in the annual automatic three percent escalation factor. The idea from MDE standpoint, EPA's standpoint, is not to give volume discounts that would encourage more use of water and to, and, and, and to, to charge a sufficient amount that, that there's a somewhat of a deterrent factor to, to use water wastefully. And then water use regulations is, is measure nine. Union Bridge has extensive water regulations. It also authorizes the town through the mayor and council to impose water use restrictions in times of shortage, emergency, and to quote the regulations for any other reason. So the, the statutory authority is in place. And failure to obey those restrictions can result in municipal infraction and also the discontinuance of water service to the violating party. So that's, again, in a format somewhat scaled down from one of the EPA publications. And I would be looking to ask for council approval for that plan so that when we submit here at the end of the month, that we can also submit this plan. If council is not comfortable, because we've kinda done this rather quickly here towards the end of the month as far as the plan is concerned, and we had to gather up Jeff and, and, you know, put together the work session, then we could probably submit it as a draft plan if we needed to. And then, you know, follow up on this in a month or so if council is, is uncomfortable voting on it now. I thought that you probably would be able to vote on it since a lot of this is, these things are things that we have been talking about, but we just haven't put them all in one place.
Just voting on the water conservation plan part of it?
Yeah, because the, the rest of it is just a compilation of the information that's the mayor will send down to the, to MDE.
Seeing as we've gone over most of this already, I make a motion that we approve the water conservation plan.
We have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second it.
A second or any questions?
There is just one typo I noticed on measure three, letter A. It says, seek funding to acquire and operate Perma Lager System. Is it Perma Lager?
Yes. Yes, it is, okay.
Just out of curiosity, if we should decide that we wanted to change this later, we could do that, right? I mean, it's not like, once we vote on it now, it's done. You can never change it again as long as it's there?
Absolutely. This is not a Union Bridge code requirement. It's not a specific state law requirement. But MDE imposed it as part of renewing the permit. And actually, they had asked us to do it the last time, but I guess they didn't require it. We knew we had a leakage problem, so we've sort of been focused on that anyway and we, we let it go. But, but yes, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a-
It's kind of what they want you really to-
That's, that's what I thought, so it didn't make any-
It's a policy, but not a, a law that, you know, is etched in stone. So it, and, and I think it, theoretically, it should change because over time, you're gonna have other priorities.
New technologies.
Yeah, so it's something that should be revisited, you know, from time to time.
And they'd be really happy if we do it every couple of years when, especially when you're getting new permits. Okay, we have a question? Or any more questions? Okay. All those in favor of the draft? Are you, are you on a draft? Are you ready to just send it as it is?
It doesn't need to be- It doesn't need to be draft because we can always change it at any time, so...
Okay.
This can, and this gets the ball rolling with them so that we can have more communication. So, I see, you know...
Okay, all those in favor of the permit that we have here? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes? Motion carries. Get this signed, please, John.
Here's the promotional letter. Now, I'll give that. Do you want to mail it? You can sign just the letter on top and then we'll give it to Dawn. Okay, next item is the American Tower lease extension proposal. And again, we talked about this. American Tower would like to have some sort of response by the end of the month. There isn't any real pressure, urgency from the town's standpoint really to do anything. The, the lease stands as it is, but the proposal is to add ten additional five-year extensions, so that's fifty years. The current lease extends out to 2036 anyway. Just to clarify the, the offer itself, because it's, it's gone back and forth, it was thirty thousand dollars for the extension, then it went to ten, and I think ten might have been the number that, that Dawn quoted at the, the work session. And then when I called their agent to ask a few questions about their extension document, he, I, I actually was confirming that it was ten and he said, no, that was, that went out in error, that it continues to be thirty thousand dollars for the extension. So, and, and that is in a written email that, you know, it is in writing, in an email. And it, okay, so you have that. And actually, that is consistent with the...
Oh, not to choose.
With the April seventeenth letter that they sent. So, I, I think the ten thousand, I'm not sure what caused that mistake, but he sort of apologized for that. The questions I had for him, because as far as the, you know, a recommendation on the business deal, I'll, I'll defer to you all. That's not really a legal matter. And it's kind of hard, it's, it's so remote when you're talking about decades and decades down the road that who knows what it might be worth or not worth. It's a real guessing game. But, some of the things in their draft lease amendment go beyond just an extension. They, they talk about giving American Tower a limited right of first refusal. It creates a confidentiality standard. And I questioned him on those things and his answer was that we didn't need to, all of those various terms that I guess they hope we just sort of close our eyes and sign are not all necessary to this. What they're really interested in is the extension. What I explained to him was that, you know, we spent a fair amount of time over the years getting this agreement to where it works for the town. And I doubted whether the council was going to be too interested in, in creating new options and new rights. An extension is one thing, that's just a matter of going out further, you know, in time. But otherwise, changing the agreement, I think there, I, I explained to him, I thought there might be some resistance to that. And he sort of reassured me that he didn't feel like those other issues were really what they were getting at, that the thirty thousand was for the, the time extension. But having said all of that, I, I, it's very hard to, to render a guess as to what this type of extension is worth. It's extremely unusual to go out that far. And who knows what the technology will be? Even in 2036 is, you know, seems like that's so far off and the lease is all, they're already bound to 2036. And, and again, it's a, these are five-year renewals, so the sub-tenants and American Tower can at any point along the way not renew. So, these are options essentially to renew.
Do we have the right not to renew on those extensions?
No. No, and, and that's not generally the way it works. The landlord is, is bound if the tenant wants to renew. But, it's a good question because how long do you want to be bound?
So, at this point, at the end of this, whenever it's twenty thousand, thirty, what did you say?
Thirty-six.
Okay, because their letter says thirty-one.
Yeah, that's, there's a, there was an amendment that extended it one additional five-year term from two thousand and eight. And I think, I didn't talk to him about this, but I think they may have missed the amendment when they bought, they bought the tower from the party that did the extension.
So, at this point in two thousand thirty-six, the total, the total lease that they have right now would run out.
That's right.
There'd be no more extensions.
They would not have the right to extend.
They'd have the option to discuss a new lease, but they wouldn't have the right to renew.
That's correct.
So, if we gave them the extension that they wanted, the thirty thousand, that they were only to pay thirty thousand dollars for, that would give them, according to this, twenty-five more years. Five additional five-year terms in the letter they sent us.
Fifty more years.
April seventeenth. Option two...
It's, well, their document...
Five additional for five-year terms.
Tenant should have the option to extend the lease for each of ten additional five-year terms.
Okay, all I have is the letter dated April seventeenth.
Yeah, I didn't notice that the letter was...
And the letter says, "Five additional years effective at the expiration of the lease agreement, September thirtieth, two thousand thirty-one, with the option to renew for five additional five-year terms. Rent payments and escalation rate to remain the same." And for that, they would give us a thirty thousand dollar signing bonus upon full execution of the extension agreement. And you're saying that the extension agreement that they sent you says five, ten-year terms?
That's right.
Or ten-five terms.
Which is it?
Ten-five year terms.
Ten-fives, ten-five year extensions.
Okay, ten-five year terms.
I did not ask him the reason for the difference. I focused on the document.
I understand that, I just, I don't have that document in front of me, all I have is the letter, so that's what I was going by.
Don't they keep sending us the money every month? Every year?
Yeah, I guess the other thing is from a, even though it just seems hard to know what kind of financial model you would create to, to figure this out, you know, one of the reasons that landlords typically, any type of landlord, doesn't want to go out too far is because you don't know what kind of inflation is coming. I mean, if inflation takes off, we've got a three percent escalator that's negotiated, which has been a pretty reasonable over the years that, that we've, you know, been in, in this arrangement. But, you know, you could get inflation back to the ten, twelve, fifteen percent range and if that's where it was in twenty thirty-six, you probably wouldn't be real happy that you had extended it. On the other hand, if there are no more towers and you've got your thirty thousand this year, you know, you'd look back and say, well, it was probably the right thing to do. So, really, really hard, hard to say. And, you know, that goes whether it's an additional twenty-five years or an additional fifty, you're still, you're not even starting that term until twenty thirty-six.
One thing for sure, another twenty-five years, I'm not going to be here.
I would imagine that the whole composition of the room would be different.
Would be totally changed.
I, I'm just not sure that...
The mayor would be the, would be Laura's son by then.
I'm just not sure with, with the, with the discrepancies between the letter and what they sent you and the changes that they tried to put in there, you know? And that binds us, I mean, if we do that now, come two thousand thirty-six, that's another fifty years that the town would be bound to allow them to continue the lease. By that time, you know, cell towers could actually be worth a lot more than they're worth right now. They are still building cell towers because we're still, the company I work for is still getting called out to do the pads for cell towers, so there's still a lot of them being put up.
What would be the problem? Would just keep me to the twenty thirty-six?
There's no problem at all. Like I said at the start, there's no urgency, there's no pressure on the town. If, if you just say, "We're not interested, we just remain under the same arrangement until twenty thirty-six," that still gives them the right every five years to not renew, but that's where we are now, so we're not gaining anything, you know, as far as the five-year renewal options by signing this. I guess the only thing you're gaining is there's thirty thousand dollars in the coffers of the town, that's, that's irreversible. So, you are gaining that, that, you know, that's a known cash amount. It's payable within, I think, thirty days of the time this is signed, so it's, it's an upfront type of payment.
And if I'm reading this right correctly, or reading this spreadsheet correctly, we now get forty thousand five hundred ninety-six eighty-one?
One thousand three hundred and fourteen, we did, yes.
Yes. That's our rents.
That's our, our, if you look at the very top line, one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars is your ground rent.
One thousand three...
If you look, okay, look at each year, each month. So, June, the very first number for June two thousand fourteen?
One thousand three hundred and fifty-four forty-seven.
Yes, that's the ground rent. The other ones underneath that is your revenue share.
And the ground rent is what this lease is for, actually. Well, it's, it also, we also include, it also includes the...
Three percent increase.
It also includes the, the...
Revenue share.
Revenue share in that lease, correct?
And, and most of those sub-tenancies are three percent increases also. I think some of them might be fifteen percent every five years, but they average out roughly to about three percent a year.
Okay, you all want another month to look over this and discuss it? Because it doesn't have to be signed or any, any agreement has to be made right now anyway. You want some more time to discuss it?
I, I will say, he did, he, he said, and I'm not sure whether they put this in writing, but he did say they wanted a, a response by the end of this month. Now, I told him that I didn't necessarily expect that that would happen, that the council would be ready to give him an answer that quickly, but offers can be withdrawn if not accepted.
I'd like to see us just stay with the twenty thirty-six agreement, other than we won't be getting that thirty thousand dollar.
That thirty thousand dollars would be really nice, but, but what are we, not knowing what's going to happen in the future, what are we committing ourselves to that could turn around and bite us?
We don't, nobody knows that.
Exactly. I mean, it could turn around and bite them too, but...
Well, my only thing is...
They can stop after every five years if they don't want to rent it anymore.
And, and, you know, like you say, that three percent might be, might, might jump up to maybe ten or twelve or fifteen percent we might want in, by twenty, after twenty thirty-six, maybe even five or ten years down the road, but, yeah. And we're just looking out for the best interest of the town because like I say, none of us are going to be here twenty, in, about twenty thirty-six anyway.
I recommend that we don't pursue it, that we don't accept the, the request for the lease renewal.
Extension.
Extension.
But we will still get our three percent increase?
Everything else stays the same, yep.
Okay. So, everybody understand the motion that Ellen just made? You, of course, you know, we'd rather have a full council, but we're not going to have a full council until next month.
Well, a couple of things. Inaction means nothing happens, so even if you don't vote on it, then, then we just tell them the council didn't make any decision on it. The rule in the charter is that you do have a quorum because you have three of the five, but any action requires a majority of the five. So, anything you do has to be tonight, has to be unanimous, or you're not going to carry, you're not going to have the three that you need.
So, you guys, we have a motion or do they want to make a second to that? Are you comfortable or are you just...
Actually, mine was a recommendation, I didn't make a motion.
Okay, okay.
I don't have a problem making a motion if we want to tonight, but it, it might actually with something like this, be better to have the full...
Okay.
The full council in, in, for the vote.
So, you want to make your recommendation and we hold off till next month when we have a full council or at least hopefully we'll have a full council or maybe just other members? Because your recommendation is not to do anything with it.
Yeah, my recommendation is not to, not to do anything with it, we don't want to agree to this at this point.
Okay, everybody agree with Ellen's recommendation? Okay, we're going to, not do anything for now, John.
Okay, we'll pass that along. All right. Couple of other short items. We got, and Mayor, you may have also gotten this, but we got a communication from Alan Smolin that he will be moving and therefore will have to replace him on the planning zoning...
Planning Commission.
Commission. So, I guess just for general information thought, if, I don't know how you're, you'll conduct that search, but I believe he said as early as October or November.
Right.
So, that's sort of pending now. And we talked about the stormwater management already, so... That is all I have.
Okay, we'll go to public comments, because Jared's not here, so we don't have anything on grants tonight, other than, well, I guess Edgar will bring up under his report. So, public comments and concern, if Mason, you would like to come up, introduce yourself and state the reason why you're here and just give us a little background, please?
The microphone, no, turn around, look at us, honey.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mason Conway. I am a boy scout from Troop Five Ninety-Five and I am here for my communications mayor badge. One of my requirements is I have to attend a public meeting and address the key points discussed.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Okay, I'm sure if you had some, you have a lady close by that you can get some answers from, right? Well, thank you very much for coming and, and also for leaving our pledge for us tonight. And you're welcome to come anytime you'd like to, okay? Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else's public comments or concerns? You have anything for us? You're just attending? Good, okay. All right, we'll go to our committee reports, we'll start with Ellen.
Okay, I'm happy to say that we've changed our trash company and they seem to be working out fairly well. I did not get any complaints since they started the beginning of this month. Have you gotten any, Dawn? So, things are looking up on that end of things. The Waste, Waste Management Advisory Council... The Waste, Waste Management Advisory Council will be meeting the thirty-first at six P M. I've been appointed to that, so I'll be at that meeting. And the Environmental Advisory Council is not meeting until August twentieth. They have, uh, canceled the last two meetings, so there was nothing to report. We had some police issues in town, most recently this weekend on Elgar Street. Domestic fighting leading into other people trying to break it up, fighting, police were there, person was arrested. Um, and you touched on the parking issue. I had responded to John's email and I clearly stated for him that I was the person in charge of the police and the meter maids and so on and so forth. Gave him my email address and my cellphone number, explained to him because he seems to have a misconception of the authorities that are granted to us as council people. And so I thought I should bring that up at the meeting too, so everybody can understand this, is that we are not granted any police authority. Any, we do not have any more police authority than a regular individual resident in the town of Union Bridge. We can call the police if there's an issue, just like any resident in the town of Union Bridge, but we ourself cannot go out and act like a police person. So therefore, if there's an issue when the normal deputy is not around, or the parking meter enforcement person is not around, you need to call the sheriff's department, and they've said that you're to call nine-one-one for it, you know, that, that's what you should do. So I made sure that he, I addressed that in that letter also. The only other thing is, is that it, something that we might want to consider discussing with all this, this stormwater talk and everything is the, the storm drains here in the town of Union Bridge and possibly seeing if we can get some grant help to take care of the issue, because on the east side of town, and I could be mistaken, but the last time I drove around, I didn't see any storm drains until you hit Farquhar Street. So everything from the community center down comes all the way down and hits Farquhar Street before it hits a storm drain. The brand-new storm drains that were put in right there, um, on Farquhar Street at the end towards Elgar Street, um, they did clean it out, because we had a pond there two storms ago. For one storm, it was good, the next storm, we're back to creating a pond there again and covering the sidewalk, so I'm not sure if maybe there might be more of an issue where it's actually some kind of, not complete, but somewhat blockage actually in the actual storm drain line from there, because I believe it leaves there and comes down towards Elgar Street. I could be wrong.
I don't know.
But anyways, it, it did flood again, it did create a pond up there again. So maybe if we could, um, and I, and I'm not sure exactly where to look for it, but, you know, try to look for some kind of grant money to try to do something about that.
Well, I don't, we'd have to look, because I don't know when they did, when they redid, uh, Farquhar Street, whether they put any other drains in there or not. We'd have to look at when that was done, the plans and.
This, they, there's one at the end of Elgar, I know there's one down towards, uh, Broadway. And I couldn't tell you one further down, but I know that there's two right in there. But all that water comes down the hill, mostly right there at Benedum. Comes down there and it's, as it comes around, it hits those two, but it's so much coming down and there's so much debris. And I'm not just talking leaves and stuff, the last time that someone was out there when it was coming down, we had pieces of wood, like one by six, one by twelve, that kind of, but small pieces of wood that actually, because of the way the storm drains are on that road, it's, you've got your road that's kind of canked like that, and you've got your storm drain here, the sidewalk is here, and there is an opening right there between this storm drain, the, the grate itself and the sidewalk. So some of that bigger stuff gets in there. And I know it was a, I know it was a royal mess when they, and it was a big mess when they cleaned it out this last time. So I thought maybe if we could look into looking for some kind of grants, because obviously storm drain work is not cheap. I'm, I'm well aware of that, you know, just from having been involved in the testing side of it, I know it's not cheap at all. So I really don't think it's something that we can, as a town, afford to do with the money we have in our coffers right now. But maybe we could try to look for some kind of grants out there that we can, that can help us to extend our storm drain system up to the community center, up that way, so that it helps take some of the pressure off.
We'll start working, we'll get Donnie to look at and get, he can talk to contractors about it. I hardly doubt if the state is, or the county is gonna have any, definitely not the state's gonna have any money for that, but we can try.
We can try, that's, you know, I haven't started looking at, but, you know, we can try looking for it and see what happens. Um, I've sent a bug down to M M L to see what, you know, if they know of anything going around that could help us with that. So we'll see what they say. And the other thing was I've been reappointed to the Communications Committee again this year, which will start meeting next month.
Good.
I'm excited for that. I enjoy that committee. It's a worthwhile one, and I'm done.
Okay, Laura?
Um, we had two lights reported out to First Energy.
Okay, Edgar?
The one problem that we have up the center, uh, Westminster Fire extinguisher up there the other day, and the fire sus- suppression system, older stoves, is, um, won't read the, uh, current regulations, so it's gonna have to be replaced. They give us a price for the unit would be seventeen forty-five. Now, this is not in, uh, counting, the electrical wires going to this will not read electrical code either, so both the wires is gonna have to be replaced along with this. Um, as reading this thing, um, I, my recommendation is let buyers do the whole job, to subcontract it out, because if we have an electrician come in there and do this for the first visit and ever visit F of that, to do the inspection is gonna cost us sixty-five dollars. But if they do it, then we don't have to pay that sixty-five dollars, so. I don't know, I don't have the prices, or they don't have the price either for the, doing the electrical work, so that would have to be extra on top of the seventeen forty-five.
Yeah, it's still better just to let them do the whole project than us get in the middle of it and have to go back and forth and send different people up there to do it.
Right.
And they'll warranty their work, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see where it's at.
So your, your recommendation is to have, uh, Westminster Fire extinguisher service do the whole job?
Right.
Okay. Make that motion, we'll.
I'm making a motion that, you know, have Westminster Fire extinguisher do the whole job.
For the fire suppression unit.
And whatever it's involved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have any questions? All those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Those, okay, motion's carried. Carry it on, right Edgar? Okay, is that it?
We're getting a grant to do, trying to make the, uh, community center more efficient and, uh, conservative. Just be, uh, installing new doors, new windows, uh, studing the walls out and putting, uh, insulation in the walls. Spread, uh, um, putting in insulation. Uh, so far, the estimated cost would be like fifty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, which, um, the grant is like thirty-seven thousand so far. So we're working on this, so.
Get with, uh, Jared and this, uh, energy grant, so we're getting with Jared and try to get something going, because we're never gonna have to bid it out, at least try to get.
Doing the energy audit first.
And I think, uh, Jared had some people up there last week to look at some things that we can do. They have a couple of recommendations that we can do on our own as far as putting insulation on the water heaters and different things, and they wanted some information about the air conditioner and the furnace and things like that, so once all that information is together, we can start on that. But it's, it's a lot of things we can do there as far as the lighting and things like that, um, and as they say, it's like saving about five percent energy or something over the year, over the next five years, well, you can do that just by insulating walls and put some studying up there, because those walls in the wintertime are just like ice cubes because it's blocked. And then putting the new windows in is gonna save energy, because those windows were probably okay in nineteen sixty-three when that building was built, but they're just glass, and putting in, uh, double pane windows in and things like that, that's gonna really save a lot. And, uh, it's really gonna spruce our building up, and I, I actually believe we're gonna get more rentals out of it when it gets done. You know, it costs money to make money, so it's gonna, I think it's gonna benefit the town a lot once all this is done. Buildings, got a nice looking building sitting there, and you'd have to put something in it to keep it, or it'll just sit there and fall down. So I think it's gonna be well worth our while to do this. So just as soon as we get, uh, somewhere on the energy grant and everything, get some more information together, we can put out the bids out so that we can hopefully get some other contractors. I know when we just got estimates last year, it was kind of hard to get anybody, because it's a commercial building and a lot of people either didn't want to deal with a commercial building, or it wasn't a big enough job for them, so I'm sure, we'll get some other bidders that'll be glad to work close to home if they're into that kind of work. So, that's it. You have anything else, Edgar? Okay, like I say, Donald's not here, Amy's not here. We do have this, anybody takes it out and looks at it, get it back, because it should be in the office so that everybody can see it, if anybody in the town wants to see it. The annual report is here, if anybody wants to look at it, it gets pretty lengthy and it's pretty detailed, and we get one of those every year. It's a pretty good documentation there, so. Uh, let's see, our next meeting will be, work session will be August the eleventh, and the next council meeting will be August the twenty-fifth. If no one else has anything else, we're in line for adjournment.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in, say ayes?
Aye.
Those, motion's carried. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
I did suggest to them, Perry, in my, my response to him, I did suggest to him that if he still felt there was an issue that needed to be discussed, he was more than welcome to come to the August meeting, but that he needs to let me know in a timely fashion.